So, those are my few thoughts. I think overall, it's a, much to my surprise, it's a positive, it's a net positive. And it just reminds me that as we now look into this comprehensive plan that we're up against the deadline on, and I hope we can speak to before the night before the sun comes up, that, you know, we really, there is so little promise in our community right now. There's so little to look forward to. We'd really need to start somewhere. And then, really, this is not a monumental, wonderful, great thing, but it is a spark. It's sort of a spark of hope that maybe can start to ripple throughout the neighborhoods of North Miami and possibly inspire others to do and make an investment in our community. So, I see it as a net positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. -- may we, please, no comments from the audience. Mr. Burns, you've had your --
Just real quickly, Mr. Chairman, as a condition, we wanted to add a condition that you all just spoke about, and we just want to offer it up so that it's coming from the Planning Commission to staff. As a condition besides what you just said about the other ones, is that the Volvo will not ever allow vehicles to be test drove in Keystone Point or Sans Souci on the record as a covenant, coming from the Planning Commission as it's recommended to staff, as it's recommended to the Board of Adjustment, or as it goes up the line, but that the Planning Commission recognizes that, that it's a serious concern. We recognize it, and we'll put our money where the mouth is, and put it in writing. That is a condition of the facility being there, that they will not test drive vehicles within Keystone Point or Sans Souci, if that seems to be a tone of a concern up here of some of the residents, and also you. We're just offering that up. You know, when the staffer, you all decide, if it comes from the Planning Commission and goes down the chain, that's even more power for you. Thank you.
All right. Folks, let's try to move along here. Mr. Galdos, with the statement from Mr. Burns, if we want to include that in the language, can staff craft that into?
I think I heard a sigh of relief from most of the residents here tonight, and I would propose that this be placed on the covenant, which will run with the land, which will mean that you're tied, whether, if you were to sell this property three months from now, that's still going to be a living restriction. It's going to, in perpetuity, live, this is, this will be a restriction that will live forever. So, in addition to the recommendation made by Commissioner Prevattal and the other recommendation made by Commissioner Boulay regarding the location and timing of deliveries, I would urge that this board consider these recommendations as part of the restrictive covenant. So, again, this becomes part of the use, running with the land, which the Board of Adjustment in issuing a special exception would have to adhere to as well.
Right. And to enable this to go forth with those conditions, is a motion for all those needed?
Yes, unless, unless, it depends on the motion.
Does it have to come with the motion of acceptance?
Yeah, it's proposing, you know, you're amending the conditions to include these additions, these additional recommendations.
Therefore, what we will be then, my understanding, and everyone, is that we will either reject or deny this petition with the added conditions in the covenant to be added into covenant section, that the three items that we brought up, that being time?
Time and location of delivery.
Time and location of delivery.
For number 11. For number four, Commissioner Prevattal indicated that he would also, in addition to the, no outdoor storage of vehicles, comma, whether for display or awaiting repair or maintenance, or vehicle-related items shall be permitted in connection with the retail automobile showroom.
Okay.
No driving through Sans, no test driving through Keystone Point or Sans Souci.
Then that's the one that was just proposed by the applicant.
I'm gonna come down Emerald Drive, I don't mind.
All right. So, all those conditions have now been placed in the items of conditions that were listed in the report.
In addition to all the conditions that have already been stated, which is, there's thirteen conditions, these three additional conditions have been added, yes.
At that point, then?
Mendy, you can approve the entire package deal.
Right. At this point, then, I will go ahead and entertain a motion to either accept or deny the text amendment change as stated to allow, I'm sorry?
Did you just say, I'm sorry, point of order, accept or deny?
The petition, the ordinance. We're either accepting or denying the petition, correct?
Yes, yes. With all the --
I make a motion that we accept the ordinance with all the add-ons, whatever, with all the conditions. Okay. We have a second to the motion.
Second, okay.
All right. So, all of those in favor of accepting the ordinance with the conditions, I'll say aye.
Aye.
The ordinance passes. All right, folks, I want to thank everyone for their input. We appreciate everyone's insight. It helped us formulate our theory, and it also helped us to get this project moving in the right direction. I thank the commissioners for their input. All right, let's move on. We still have other items here, ladies and gentlemen, that we need to address. Mr. Galdos, we still have the PC-815 that needs to be addressed, folks. If we can go ahead and, we do have other, may I have your attention in the back, please? Folks?
Hello?
Folks, hello, folks in the back, we still have other items that we need to address. If everyone could move their side meetings out of the chamber, we would appreciate it so we can continue. Thank you very much. With regards to PC-815 that we moved down as the last item, Mr. Galdos, I believe that the applicant is not here, but we can proceed? We can proceed.
When the applicant's --
All right. So...
Can we do this?
Can we table it till next meeting?
Yeah, till next meeting, since the applicant's not --
Can we move it to the next meeting?
Oh, it's only one item.
It's only one item.
It's not really, staff is recommending approval.
Staff is prepared, and we get the report, and we have people here that will speak on behalf or against it.
Or against, right. And, you know, you take it for what it's worth in the absence of the applicant.
All right. Okay, 'cause staff, we rely on staff giving us all the specifics that we need to hear, and then we're glad to listen to the input from the community. All right, let's go ahead and proceed. What I'm going to do, since there are a lot of folio numbers, I'm going to give you the base number, the beginning number, and then I'm going to tell you the plot, the last four digits of each one of the plots. So, bear with me as we go ahead and read off the resolution. "It's a resolution to the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, approving a tentative plat as further described in the attached Exhibit 1 for the property generally located at 2,500 Northeast 135th Street, with Miami-Dade County folio numbers as follows." And I will read you the first, let me do my math here real quick. It's the eight, first eleven numbers, if I'm not mistaken, I'm sorry, first ten numbers. Those numbers are 06, 228-064, and those numbers stay consistent with all the other folio numbers, beginning with that number, followed by dash 0010, 00-20, 00-30, 0040, 0050, 0060, 0070, 0080, 0090, 0100, 0110, 0120, 0130, 0140, and 0150, and finally, 00160. "In accordance with Article 3, Division 8, Section 3-820 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations in Chapter 28, Section 28-7 (B) of the Miami-Dade County Code of Ordinance, providing for effective date and for all of the purposes." Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for bearing with the numbers.
Yes, sir. This is a tentative plat application. I mean, as a back one to this project, you know, back in January, in December, January, this item went to Board of Adjustment to apply for variance, because they're building townhomes. Originally, the plat, right now, has fifteen, I mean, the property has fifteen platted lots, and then, back in two years ago, they came in 2013 and applied for conditional use to, for density bonuses to build, you know, or much, you know, denser development. But the property has since changed, you know, ownership, and now the new owners, you know, they wanted to put, you know, something, you know, I mean, which are the homeowners association in the area overwhelmingly supported, you know, they want to build, you know, townhomes, three-story townhomes, I mean, fee simple lot, and then they applied for variance to the Board of Adjustment to have the end units, you know, with a lesser setback. So, but they wanted to build, you know, eighteen units, because now they have fifteen lots, so they have to replat the property to create those new lots. So, this is why this application is before you tonight, because it has to go to, because of the number of lots, they have to go to a full replating. So, it has to go to a tentative plat, you know, which is going to be approved by the city and sent to the Miami-Dade County Plating Committee. Once that is approved, they have six months to come back and apply for final plat with all the recommendation from the city and then the Plating Committee of the Miami-Dade County. So, and then, this is pretty straightforward, you know, and then we, and as part of the process, you know, they also have to submit an application, you know, for concurrence, school concurrence determination, they have to, just redo that online here, because it's residential, so, and then we do it on the school board website, and it's just a matter of paying or fee. And then, this application also went to a DRC. It has been reviewed by our plating, you know, Equivalent Thompson, which is our consulting surveyors, and they found, you know, this plat, the T plat to meet all the requirements of the city and the county and the state. And then, a DRC, like I mentioned before, it went to DRC, and then Public Works, every other city department provided input, and then, they have found, you know, this application to meet, you know, the minimum requirements, you know, for level of service and such. So, again, this is a straightforward recommendation to approve this, you know, and then this applicant, you know, is the owner of Fast Track, they're proposing to build, you know, or green building, and then this is something that staff really supported, and then they're trying to really improve the community, because this site has been sitting vacant for a while. And then, they're trying to bring something, and they're really serious about it, because, and then they're taking, even about pulling building permits, so I had to explain to them, because this is going to just be on your T plat, you know, and they can start applying for it, but they can, will not get a certificate of occupancy until they get their final plat approved. But, you know, again, this is a straightforward application, and then our recommendation is for approval.
Thank you. Any quick questions on, from the staff here before I open the public hearing?
I have a quick question. They're all, I love them. So, they're all three-story units, right?
Three-story units.
Okay, and they're eighteen homes?
Yeah, they're gonna be like, you know, three groups of six units, each.
Okay.
And as further background, this commission, actually, back in January the 17th, 2013, approved sufficient bonus.
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Points for this developer to construct forty-eight units. Now, they're only seeking a lesser footprint of eighteen.
We're gonna do an apartment building there, as I recall, and we caught it, we didn't like it, it was kind of like second, and then you got, that's right, and then we, yep.
And they had, you know, many meetings with the community also, prior to them submitting the application for the Board of Adjustment.
Also.
Go ahead.
So, there are no issues with traffic?
No.
Okay.
There weren't issues when they were attempting to build forty-eight units. Now, it's like thirty-seven.
But now, everybody's okay with it?
I mean, the homeowners association in the area overwhelmingly supported that, and then we got a member.
Well, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Carol has been anxiously waiting to address this, and thank you for sticking in.
I want to go home before tomorrow morning. Good evening. Again, my name is Carol Prager. I live in Arch Creek East. I am the president of the Neighborhood Association. Alana Burdick is here with me this evening, and she is the vice president of our Neighborhood Association. Alana owns property immediately adjacent on the west border of this property. She owns a multi-level apartment building, and I live immediately to the east in twenty, we have Casabella Villas, which is twenty townhouses that are very similar to what this petitioner is going to be building. We're very excited about this. I know there is no reason for us to be here one way or the other, because I know this is house cleaning, but I just want you to please approve this, rush it through. We've been waiting some thirty years for development on that land, and we have had different visions of what was going to be built there, and this one, by far, has been the best. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol.
I make a motion that we accept the --
We still have public hearing here.
Kevin Burns, 2065 Alameda Drive. I concur with Carol and the community. So many promises on this property that, for years and years, and the Planning Commission has always been so looking forward on this property, and so I'm very glad that, finally, we're gonna be able to get something there. The community wants it, the neighborhood wants it, and they want some good, clean development. Thank you very much. Support it. And thank you all before. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to address this item? Going once, going twice, the public hearing is now closed. Now, the item is up for discussion with the commission. Mr. Prevattal?
If there's no discussion, I'd like to move to pass the item.
Mr. James, you have any?
Nothing.
All right, we have a motion now from Mr. Prevattal.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Each. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, there was one last bit of business that we needed to address, I think that we held off here, and that's regarding the comprehensive plan and the timeline that we need to talk about. First, let me say that I think, as a whole, the whole commission is extremely disappointed that our consultant wasn't prepared to meet with us tonight, to grant our wish to look at this carefully and have all the items that we wanted to see, the new items that were to be put in place for us to review, to get a handle on, and see what they developed. I, sorry, I was not able to attend the meeting the other night because of business, but from what I could gather is that we basically got nothing in return in the public presentation that would be useful for us to make any kind of recommendations or good overview on the project, and I'm not happy that the consultants took that approach. And I kind of thought that we were going to be first in line to get a handle on this. I don't know how anybody else felt of this, that we were, had asked, that we have a part in the recommendations and the general review of what they were going to present. So, the next time you talk to the consultants, you know, you're gonna, I know on my part, you can tell them that, you know, they're, we are holding their feet to the fire to get going on this, and, you know, whatever time it takes for us to set aside of our own personal agendas, whatever, to start the process to look at this so that we can get the recommendations passed on to the council, I urge you to let them, you know, to let them know so that we can address this. I don't know how anybody else feels of this. I know there's some other feelings on this. Anyone else?
I concur. I was very, very disappointed. I thought we were gonna be next in line, and I thought that we should have given our input to CRA Advisory Downtown redevelopment, you know, and I gotta apologize, because I went off on you last week, and I just, I felt like, you know, this is the last hurrah for me. I mean, I'm not gonna be here in seven years to do the next land you thought. I'll be seventy-seven then, and I'm not gonna be, you know, playing around with this stuff. But I mean, I just wanna, this is our last, this is our last shot at it. You know, I looked at Northwest Seventh Avenue, Dixie Highway, all these neighborhoods that really, and I said, no density, no increase in height. I looked over North Bay Shore Drive, valuable property, I mean, come back and say, well, we're looking at Brownfield, I just, I, it just, I hope they got the message the other day. I think they did, you know, we had that workshop, but hopefully, they're gonna be here when June?
June, yeah.
The June 2nd.
I have a problem. I'm gonna be out of town. That's why I thought we were gonna have it tonight.
Right. I know, a lot of plans were changed.
And I made arrangements, because I gotta go to, I'm gonna go to Seattle, Chicago, and Montana, and then I gotta go down to Key, so I'm gonna be gone. I can't change that already.
And I think, you know, one of the compromise, you know, the consultant, I mean, to their defense, you know, that meeting was, the last workshop was being rescheduled, you know, many times, you know, because, because one of the commissioners asked for, the council, the person asked for that meeting, and then that workshop, and then it's been, first it was the 22nd, then it was, and finally, it was the 29. So, because of that timing, really, and they wouldn't have time really to come with anything tonight, because they have to incorporate, you know, those comments from the last workshop. And so...
But if there was, there was council, what you're saying is that the understanding was that we would be the first ones to see it before any council input would be put in there. If they were influenced by any members of the council, then this is not what we had asked for from staff, and that that should not have been a reason for them to bypass us in order, and ask for more time, because if they were accommodating one, or two, or three, or the entire council, that was not the understanding we had, that we were first in line. So, I don't quite understand why, if you just told me that it's because of what a council person or a group of council people said, that's totally out of line, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
And, you know, I have issues with that, and they need to know that, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it should have come through us. That was what we talked about, and that's what we asked for the June 2nd meeting, to try to expedite this.
A year ago, a year ago, we asked for it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the workshop was open to anyone, so if a council person showed up to the workshops, that's fine, but I think, I know, I have a sense of discontent of the fact that we asked for just what they had at the time, last meeting, just send us a link, send us something, and we don't even have that version of it. So, the workshop that just took place last week, I believe, or a couple weeks ago, I understand that they don't have a version that has that stuff updated in it, but I know, I don't have any, I haven't, I didn't receive a link, or anything.
And unfortunately, we become, we become, we start getting questions from the community, or we start hearing the rumors, and I don't know, you know, we don't know what's happening. We start hearing rumors that this has been added, or that's not going to happen, and that should not be the part of the process. We should not have to be influenced by rumors and side deals, or special requests, and everybody trying to get their input into it. This body should be the ones that, to me, should be the factor that weighs those ideas or the items that goes into that. And then, we hold a proper public hearing for anybody who wants to put, have input into it. So, I know, I understand what workshops do. They make presentations, they sell the idea, and they listen to what the public have to say, but, again, those items are voted on, and then, we, you know, that's what, you know, I interpret that that's what we should be able to do.
Did they, may I ask you a question? Did the consultants, did they get out in the street, did they see what the street looks like, or did they just look at a map? I mean, did they get out there and visit the different neighborhoods and look at where the industrial area meets the residential, and go for any kind of substance of change, something meaningful, or they just did it by a map, or, you know?
Well, I think that they probably do a lot of statistical analysis. You know, they go by numbers, and they don't look at, you know...
They just gather data and...
They didn't get out there on the actual streets and to see what the heck is going on.
And just to make it a point, I think that's fine, but I think that's where we would come into place, because we're here every day. We see all the different type of developments that, or the requests that people get, and so even if they, that wasn't in their scope of work, at least, well, us having a decent amount of time to go over it, maybe we could have added some, as residents here, we could have added some...
You know, we understand we're an advisory body, but at the same time, you know, a lot of stuff has to come through us first before against the council. Whether or not the council agrees with us, for, against, or whatever, you know, we want to have the understanding that, you know, there was a process to make sure that the plan got a lot of the elements that people want, and have it done through our, you know, through our process, through this commission.
Yeah, we're just trying to do with Section 2-201, you know, relating to the powers and duties of the planning commission, so that's why. It's the first clause, they prepare recommend to the city council a comprehensive master plan for the public welfare, economic, and physical development of the city.
You're the body that breeds life into those numbers.
Right. But again, we need elements of that to breathe life into it. We need the body parts. We're not getting the body parts.
You're getting it, it's in writing now.
We can't make Frankenstein's bride, or we can't make Frankenstein with it, one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I became particularly concerned on the morning of the workshop, of the final workshop, that we had not heard anything from Plan Development or anyone else, and not a single piece of information forwarded to us, and I gave a call to the consultants, Melgren Associates, to find out that, in short, is no change. Actually, I found out the night before from one of the council people that there was an effort to have no change in the densities and the heights, which was a sort of a telling remark, that basically it's saying exactly what we have has been working and will continue to use that. It was very much concerning to me, and I expressed such at the workshop and elsewhere. I'd like, with our city attorney's permission, I, and with, by the invitation of our staff, which said that they were calling upon our commission to give input at the workshop, well, the workshop does not really allow us to go line by line, it really sort of glosses over it, and before you know it, the time is up, and they check that box, and they've done this, and we move on, and nothing really gets accomplished. We've seen it before, so many times. So, with the permission of our city attorney, I'd like to give copies of something I wrote that I passed on to the, it's a different version, but what I sent to the city council.
Again, this is a point of information, something that we're not discussing.
Point of information, and it's...
Right, it's informational, and it's a public record.
Not a public record.
It's Mr. Prevattal's personal opinion, which could be shared.
Yep. And it's my name on it, I'm not representing the committee. If the committee at some point wishes to adopt any of these ideas, I welcome them to. If I may read it into, okay, if I may read it into public record, please. I'm going to do it...
Would that be necessary?
Could I, could I please?
I mean, you're the chair, I have no objections to it.
Is there any objection from the council?
It's a good thing I'm getting social security.
Okay.
Mr. Prevattal?
Okay, I'm gonna read through...
I just want to go through, want to make sure we're doing everything properly, please.
I'm going to read through once, that's going to express the concerns, and then I'll read through a second time, but it has a concern with a possible solution. So, my concerns were, as expressed to the city council and such, "In our city of North Miami, we dream to have economic success, yet dare not to create the economic incentives. Magnets of attraction are required, but our planning doesn't meaningfully articulate them. Traffic has become increasingly congested, but we fail to identify bypass patterns. In our city of North Miami, we live in a region of abundant construction success, yet foster only the cheap and mundane. Parks are minimal and mismanaged, but locations are not sought and funds are not banked. There is concern for unemployment and crime, but we perpetually compromise our tax base. In our city of North Miami, we want our citizens to live and work locally or in place, but mixed use is a rare option. Rising seas and flooding is inevitable, but we dictate building low, covering the ground plane. People yearn for new and innovative, but we imprison ourselves with the old and deteriorating. In our city of North Miami, we know more plantings would pay back in myriad multiples, but implement a mere fraction. Commanding concepts are needed to build identities, but only generic gestures are paraded. Infrastructure will not support denser growth..." gestures are paraded. Infrastructure will not support denser growth everywhere, so we plan to have growth nowhere." Signed by me, with hope that we might finally take real measures to realize real progress. William Prevattell, AIA. Now, I'll go back, and for each of those concerns, I'll try to propose how we might address that, rather than just pointing a finger and complaining. "We dream to have economic success, yet dare not to create the real economic incentives. What if we were to institute creative zoning trade-offs, to invite special radical, to invite radical new opportunities? For magnets of attraction, sorry, magnets of attraction required, but our planning doesn't meaningfully articulate them. What if, on the other hand, we were to declare distinct high-interest, high-growth zones at the east, central part of the city, and the west part of the city? Particularly, to the west, you might find the park area at one hundred and thirty-fifth Street, where the Celestine Center is, and you can use that as a focal point. You can use the Mocha Plaza as a focal point downtown, and build upon that, and double that size. And on the east, you can use the waterfront. Traffic has become increasingly congested, but we fail to identify bypass patterns. Maybe we should prepare for having bypasses, such as one hundred and twenty-seventh Street becoming westbound lanes, primarily westbound, and having one hundred and twenty-third Street to become eastbound. The same philosophy would carry through the rest of the city, we might identify other streets that should be sort of Marshall to become one-way streets, or somehow built up to accommodate the new traffic patterns of the next ten, twenty, thirty years. We live in a region of abundant construction successes, yet foster only the cheap and mundane. What if we were to allow projects large enough in height and density to be built without subsidies? Almost everything around here has been built with subsidies, anything that's of any scale, and it comes back to haunt us, and it's not in the direction that we're trying to do. Parks are minimal and mismanaged, but locations are not sought, funds are not banked. Like to us to identify the underserved neighborhoods, and to raise fees from new high-rises, where if we go vertical, we also go horizontal, and we gain in both respects. There is concern for unemployment and crime, but we perpetually compromise our tax base. What if we were to acknowledge that bigger and better can enhance fiscal and physical conditions? We want our citizens to live and work locally or in place, but mixed use is a rare option. What if we were to permit owners to live at commercial properties and work in multifamilies? This would take a lot of cars off the street, increases pride in one's neighborhood, particularly in a commercial area, it adds to the security, and there are a number of benefits to that, and that's what many cities, many successful cities have adopted. Rising seas and flooding, rising seas and flooding is inevitable, but we dictate building low, covering the ground plane. It's a case that we've talked about many, many times before, for a number of years. Why don't we simply exclude all raised, exclude all raised and structured parking from height restrictions throughout? This would keep us off the flood plain, it's a safety concern, it allows ventilation, it would be less insurance problems down the line, it would be less health hazards. It's, there are so many benefits to this, and yet we still get handcuffed by it. Let's exclude structured parking. People yearn for new and innovative, but we imprison ourselves with the old and deteriorating. Let's encourage new replacement buildings by allowing at least the same density. You're not going to see an old dilapidated building that may have ten units in it being replaced if you're only allowed to come back with two or three units. I know of twenty-seven units, you can come back with only nine. There's a hundred and two units or so on the east side, you come back with far less, like a fifth of that. If they were able to rebuild at the same density, we're not really doing any harm, we're not changing the demands of the infrastructure, yet we could renew this. Instead, we don't see it at all. We know more plantings would pay back in myriad multiples, but implement a mere fraction. We should create pocket parks, preserves, local gardens, and plant relentlessly. If we buy plants small, and install them, plant them now, at very low cost, they will grow up to become great assets to the city in a number of ways. Shade for sound, for security, for the absorption of the water, property values, it pays back so much. We know more plantings, okay. Commanding concepts are needed to build identities, but only generic gestures are paraded. Let's designate one hundred and twenty-fifth Street Super Site Parks to live and walk around, and that would be where one hundred and twenty-fifth Street crosses the canal, that there's already some park space, that that could be a greater park, and it could also have additional, possibly higher-rise structures around it. At Mocha, again, at the park, and then at the new railroad station, why are we just, why are we doing nothing about that? Why is it just saying we're gonna put a train station? Let's, you know, let's make that a park space, let's make it a focal point, such as Hollywood has. Let's make it a focal point, let's make it some park space, let's build high-rises around it, let's accommodate the train station, let's make it a real destination that you go, welcome into the downtown area. Same way with the canal side. And then finally, "Infrastructure will not support denser growth everywhere, so we plan to have growth nowhere." That was a little scary even to think about that. So, everything else around us gets to grow, and North Miami stays exactly the same. The proposal is, at the very least, let's accept double height, double density wherever the infrastructure allows. If you're afraid to do it everywhere, let's at least be able to do it where we can.
That's what our consultant said. We don't have the infrastructure, we can't build...
So, you do it nowhere.
Let's get our date for the next time. I'd like to be...
So, thank you all for sitting through that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And I do like a lot of your points, and hopefully, we'll get a point that we'll be able to discuss this with the consultant, and bring up some of the ideas, and some of the concepts that, you know, that... Just to poke aside our... To be at our next meeting, that's what I... Right, June second, right?
June second.
Can you move that back? Can we get that back a week? I'm not gonna be here. This is, why can't we move it? She was gonna bring it up.
Oh, it would have to be a special...
No, wait, no, no. Why don't we have, instead of have it on June the second, if the board agrees, let's have it on June, I'll be back, I'm on sixth, I can be here on the ninth.
This might be a city council meeting.
I mean, that's nonsense. This is what really got me mad. This, I've been waiting for this all year, and one of the councilwomen, or councilpersons, let me shut my mouth. You know, I really, I'm really furious about this. I'm gonna be gone. I planned my whole vacation around them being here tonight, and now, our next meeting, that's when they're coming, June the second, or whatever, you know, I thought we were gonna be able to go back.
Well, time-wise, I would have no problem, if there's a council meeting on the ninth, it doesn't have to be on a Tuesday, if we want to make it, we have in the past moved meetings to another night. I mean, it's not, it's something that we've done in the past. Do you see anything charter-wise, are we in violation? If we move it ahead, we have plenty of time to notice it. If we don't move it into May, we can move, keep it in June. But we have to discuss this with the other members of...
I mean, I'm...
If they have no problem, if it's on a Thursday night, or a Wednesday night, can we...
Wednesday night, I think.
I mean, we've done this on Thursday nights, or Wednesday nights.
Sure.
So, I mean, is that permissible, first of all? Mr. Gallos?
It's beyond my authority to dictate the next council, this commission's meeting. We can't bring it up to the appropriate authority, like the city manager and the department head, to see if it's feasible, and to see, and verify that this, these chambers are available for such a meeting, and then advertise it accordingly. But...
Can we find out, I mean, I...
We could.
Can we make it a special meeting to address this, that, we've done that in the past also, if we want a special meeting just to address the one item?
You're asking, well, you're asking to move the meeting from the June second.
Well, what if we had a regular meeting that did not have that item?
Well, I...
I mean...
We don't have an agenda. The only item that I know for a fact that's going before this commission is this. It's the comprehensive plan. I'm not aware of any other applicants. We don't have anything else, so this is it. This would be, I mean, unless there's an applicant that comes forward and applies for, you know, tentative plat or something else, which is...
June the ninth would be the, so make it that Wednesday.
Are you looking...
If we have anything on that Wednesday.
So, that same week?
That would be the tenth.
Someday on the same week, or the following week?
No, the following week. I'm not coming, I'm gonna be back in town.
Yeah, but now, let's make sure we're not conflicting with the council meeting that might take place on the ninth.
This has to be, it goes to you, and then the council for approval.
I mean, unless, unless there's a one of election...
First of all, there's a runoff election, which is on June second. That is scheduled for June second.
That's a possibility.
So, we may not, we may not be available to hold that meeting on the second.
Mr. Attorney, could you...
So, I would suggest perhaps that we wait till the ninth anyway, because I don't want to hold a meeting, I would not, they would want to haul, they want the city chamber for election night, should there be...
They're gonna bring it up tonight, about moving the meeting.
Can we get her to expedite a decision on this, and that we're requesting, even if we have to do it under the guise of a special, it would have to be called a special meeting, right, because of the fact that it's not held on June the second?
It's not in the regularly scheduled, right?
Right. So, even if it's called a special, special meeting, gives us enough time to get noticed, and get moving on it. Is everybody in agreement with that?
So, Mr. Each, you're looking for the second week. Any day, the second week that this, these chambers are available?
After that Tuesday, that Tuesday on.
Right, okay.
That would be like the ninth on.
But you're, if that's the ninth, are you okay on the ninth?
That's a Tuesday, right?
No, that would be Wednesday.
I could be here on a Tuesday.
All right.
I could be here on the ninth, anytime on the ninth after.
No.
And really, this is something I want to be here for.
No city council meeting, though. If there's a council meeting that night, would we be able to reschedule it for the Wednesday, Monday, or Thursday? How would that work with everybody on the commission?
I mean, Mr. Attorney, if I might add, could you look into the possibilities of, you know, because right now, we're just throwing out dates, or throwing out, you know, because some of us have our schedule planned in accordance with our, with our schedule, with our planning commission meetings. So, I agree to do a special meeting if need be. However, instead of just throwing out dates, because I'm, you guys say seventeen, this, I don't know what day that is, and I want to make sure I'm here. So, is it something that the staff could look into, and whatever your finding is, contact us, either via email or, you know, some form of, form of contact, so we can, because you can't get no information for us tonight, so we're just gonna be here, just, you know?
I don't have June's schedule right here for these chambers, so...
Understand.
And I don't know your availability. There are other, there are many factors that we would have to consider before we can definitely move the meeting from what would otherwise be scheduled, which would be the first Tuesday of the month.
Okay, so that's something that you can look into for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's normally something that the department will, you know, look into, and yeah, and then report.
Okay.
To, to poll, actually poll the commissioners, to see which dates you're available.
And we have done that. I know, they've called us and said, are you available on Thursday, such and such, or not?
Thank you.
So, and again, they only have to go if they have a quorum. So, if we're requesting a special meeting, and somebody's not available, but a quorum is reached, my understanding is that staff can say that the majority have agreed that it's on Thursday, such and such, and they can go ahead and post that.
A quorum would have to be verified, otherwise, no business can be...
Right. And if somebody's disagreed, or can't make it that night, and there is a quorum that agreed to it, then that meeting is going to take place on that night. Everybody understands that, correct?
Yeah.
I may be away from that Thursday on to that Tuesday, so Wednesday would have been the ninth best.
Let them find out, the ninth?
Um, I believe that's the eighth. The ninth is a Thursday, correct?
No, no, the ninth is a Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Wednesday is the tenth.
Okay, yeah, so from Thursday on, so that ninth, and then that Wednesday after, I'll be fine. But from that Thursday until that following Tuesday, I won't be available.
So, then, then would everybody be fine with June ninth or June tenth?
Yeah.
All right?
We look for those two, we have a little bit of chambers.
Okay, please.
And then, you know, the powers that be to decide whether or not we can...
Correct.
All right, we'll keep trying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please have them stay in touch with us. I know, and Katrina, I know a lot of us, for some reason, we're not getting our emails, or we're not checking them. That could be our fault, too, because some of us aren't diligent enough.
I get all the emails, yes.
I've been getting emails, and I did get the emails for the workshop.
I get emails, phone calls.
Okay, but I...
Packages in my mail.
But call, I'll give you, I'll give you another email address for me, so that, that's probably easier for you to read. But I do appreciate the phone call, and I would suggest that we...
We used to get a phone call, to see if we were available or not, and that's...
Hey, Katrina, this is what you signed up for.
And that works. We need prodding, we need, you know, we need that extra...
Are we ready to get out of here?
Okay. Yeah, can I just ask a final thing? Could I ask of staff, since in speaking with Melgren Associates, I was supposed to get back to them with the ideas. They said, send us something in writing. Can I request of the staff to give this, to convey this to Melgren Associates?
Yeah, I have it there.
Okay, that'd be conveyed to them, please.
I have Eric's on.
Well, I wanted to have, I want to have them officially through staff.
Let's go quick now. I just want to make sure there are no old business, and no new business. We've pretty much taken care of new business, we're done with that. So, I'll go ahead and call for adjournment.
All right.
Hey.